Go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Kingsville City Commission to order. It's Tuesday, May 28, 2013 at 6:00 PM. All five commission members are present. We open our meetings with a prayer and pledges of allegiance. If you care to join us, please stand. Working on allegiance in prayer, please.
While we thank you for your goodness to us, we ask that you would take control of this meeting. We laid out and directed today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And as we rally for religious stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor Texas law. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
The next order of business is to approve the minutes or minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
Motion made by the official papers to approve both roll minutes. And seconded by Mr. Luber. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fanyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh.
Yes, so here we have several public hearings. We'll try to get through this as best we can. The first public hearing is going to start at 6:02. It is regarding a condemnation proceeding for structures located at 603 and a half West Avenue D. This is a public hearing. Anyone that wants to speak on this subject, all you have to do is come to the podium and tell us who you are and where you live. You have five minutes to talk about this particular subject. Okay. If you want to come up after Commissioner Kellum, that's fine too.
I see all the usual suspects.
Yeah, so I was thinking.
Just to give a quick report, I'll keep this brief. You have a packet of information that is provided to you. This structure is obviously in disrepair, which is the reason it is before you. It does have some past due amount on taxes owed. It's got some obvious deficiencies based on the photos you can see there. I'll be glad to answer any questions that the official might have.
Mike, if my memory serves me right, we've had this on this particular structure before. And I thought we were already condemned it.
We had in 2008. And basically, we felt they're on the side of caution to go through the process again, since we didn't act on it before.
And I remember we had a gentleman that came up and spoke about trying to prepare it and I worked on it the other day, and it looks like it did in 2008.
Worse than it did in 2008.
Well, it did in five more years.
Yeah.
So we, time to go?
Yes, sir. I agree.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Anybody want to speak other than Mr. Kellum? I could put your answers on the other times. Some people at home. There's no time limits on these public meetings. If we have nothing else to talk about, we can close them. There's not any.
That's correct.
And that will apply to the first seven items of this.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Agenda, okay. All right, then I'm going to close this meeting at 6:04. We'll go to the next public hearing regarding condemnation proceedings for structures located at 2029 General Cabasus Boulevard here in Kingsville. And again, at 6:04, I'll open this public hearing. Again, if anybody wants to speak on this subject, just come to the podium, tell us who you are and where you live, and you have five minutes to talk about this subject. Mike?
Mayor Commission, actually new developments as of 4:58 today. The owner of this property signed over the property as a property owner agreement. So he's voluntarily agreed to have the building demolished by the city and will pay us for the demolition of the property. Positive resolution and we're doing the right thing.
Oh, which one is it? Joe Johnson? Joe Johnson, yeah. It's the one out there by Paulson Falls.
Yes, sir. It's in a foundation issues, walls are remaining flat.
Let me answer something. There's several outbuildings. Are we going to knock down everything?
The wooden structure behind it is going and the main house as well.
What about the water well in the retain, the tank? They have, they have holding tank there.
We're taking everything.
Okay, good. So I have a question about that because there's a lot of, I think there's two structures out back. And there's an apartment back there, and then there's it looks like a tool shed or.
We need to take down all accessory structures when we do these.
Okay, that's part of the problem. Now, it does have water well there. What are we going to do with that?
We'll, we'll have to see what's underneath it. Maybe we'll have to fill it in or plug it or cover it.
Okay, well, it's kind of a special problem. We don't see those very often.
Yeah, we'll address it and we'll make sure we see and get the property right now.
All right. Well, do we just take, that table, just go on to the next meeting?
Yeah.
All right, well, let's go ahead and close this at 6:07. Then we'll go to the next public hearing, 6:07, regarding condemnation proceedings for structures at 426 West Weeshedge, Kingsville, Texas. Anybody that wants to speak about this subject, all you have to do is come up, tell us who you are and where you live, and you have five minutes to talk about this subject.
Mayor City Commission? This structure is much like the same, but same ones we presented over the past several months. Property has not had a water service since January of 2000, which would indicate that's the last time that it was actually occupied. Structure has been before the property condition inspection, and it is found to be unsafe and unacceptable in many different areas, as you can see through the commission reports you have. There was one, one error on the property condition report stating that it had asbestos siding. That is incorrect. We've corrected the permanent file, the one we put on record tonight, that it does not have asbestos siding. It is wood lap siding, and that's indicated within the, within the photos that are provided to you. But it needs to be torn down.
This thing has some history to it. I think it's one of those old railroad hotels, metal, metal. This was a railroad town.
It's got foundation issues, eve issues, leak holes. It's got some serious problems. Very up in center. This is one that's been ongoing for nearly two years now.
I noticed there's not an individual owner to this, so.
Yeah, it is owned by New Life.
New Life Fellowship. I may have to do a notice. Do they have, how does that work for the East? Do they have an agent to, who did you serve or how did, how do we do that? Is this last known address?
Yeah, they did the, go by whoever was the last on the tax rule is the owner of the property, wherever that person is supposed to be residing.
Any questions from City Commission? Okay. Anybody out there who wants to speak about this subject? All right, it's 6:09. We're going to go to the next public hearing. We'll open it at 6:09. This is a hearing regarding condemnation proceeds for structures located at 822 East Ella. Wait a second. Let me, this is a public hearing. Anyone that wants to speak about this particular subject, all you have to do is come up, tell us who you are and where you live, and you have five minutes to talk about this particular subject.
Mayor Commission? More of the same, unfortunately. This structure was addressed, again, well over a year ago by the previous building official. No follow-up action taken, so we brought the case back up, renotice, tried to make contact with the owner to get them to provide a repair plan. No response was given. As you can see in the photos, it's a wood lap siding building, lap sided building, which again, we have an error on there that says it's asbestos, but it's not. Same situation as the previous one, we corrected the permanent file, but the photos clearly show that this structure is unsecured. It is in a serious state of disrepair. It's been burned out. It is not salvable. We're asking that the demo order be issued for this structure as well to get rid of the attractive nuisance in the area.
Any questions from the commission? Okay, again, does anybody want to speak about this particular subject? All right, then I'm going to close this public hearing at 6:11, and we're going to go to the next public hearing, starting at 6:11. This is a hearing regarding condemnation proceedings for structures located at 306 West Weeshedge here in Kingsville. Anybody that wants to speak about this particular subject, all you have to do is come to the podium, tell us who you are and where you live, and you have five minutes to talk about it. Mike?
This structure, we've had ongoing issues with it for well over a year as well. We've had some incidents over there. The building was secured by the city. Needed some unauthorized occupancy within the building. The structure does not have restroom facilities. It does not have plumbing. It has exposed wiring that is not operable, is an extreme fire hazard, has not had power for quite a while. The last date was, it's been quite some time. It's not had water service since 2010, so even if they had plumbing, it wouldn't, it wouldn't work with that issues. Complaints from neighbors about the previous occupant using the restroom outdoors, creating a sanitary issue there, as well as inside the house. So there's sanitary health issues with this structure, as well as the ceiling's missing, lack of facilities. All those things combined make this house structured that we deem cannot be salvable. You'd have to completely tear it down to nothing. There really isn't much left. With that point, the roof needs replaced, severely deteriorated. So substantial repairs would be required and probably end up costing more than the cost of work. Based on those findings, we deemed it to be condemnation case and ask for the commission's blessing to issue a demo order and make care of the structure.
Any questions or comments about this?
Is that two additions? I mean, is there a brick structure, a wood structure or?
No, it's just a wood structure.
Did you have a?
It's a lap sided building. And that's, that's a, that's a, pulling out. There's an issue with overgrowth and weeds as well.
Mayor, you threw this curve, you didn't put them in order. They weren't put in order, so. You know, we can't follow each other.
The mayor and the mayor both, them were going to rob.
You can see in the photos where the ceiling is collapsed, it gets washed hanging. There's a number of issues.
Okay. Anybody want to speak on this subject? All right, I'm going to close this meeting at 6:13. We're going to open the next one at 6:13. It's a public hearing regarding condemnation proceeds for structure located at 609 East Mesquite here in Kingsville. Anyone, this is a public hearing. Anyone that wants to speak on this subject, all you have to do is come to the podium, tell us who you are and where you live, and you have five minutes to talk about this particular subject.
Seeing no one, I'll continue. 609 East Mesquite, again, this is a wood lap sided building, contrary to the report of asbestos siding. That's been cleared up and discussed. This one has a long history of eight years worth of back taxes. Just for record, it has not had water service since 2001, which indicates that it has not been occupied in well over 10 years. Stated value and a number of repairs are required for the structure, not to mention the fact that it's, got a lot of wood rock, near collapsing, siding holes.
This is the one that the owner had some proposals to repair a couple, three years ago. This is the next one. That is. I'll get this one.
I'm not aware of that, but it could be.
It's dated. It was three or four years ago.
These, this structure was addressed, well, addressed well over a year ago, and we opened up the case again, and we're asking that it be issued a condemnation order for demo. Due to a stated disrepair. There's been no activity in this, in this structure at all. No efforts to repair or replacement or any of that.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? All right, does anybody want to get up and speak about this subject in Kingsville? If not, it's 6:16, we're going to close this meeting. Go to the next one that's going to open in at 6:16. This is a public hearing regarding condemnation proceeds for structures located at 1229 East Avenue B here in Kingsville. This is a public hearing. Anyone that wants to speak on this subject, all you have to do is come to the podium and tell us who you are and where you live, and you have five minutes to talk about this particular subject.
Mayor Commission, last one for tonight. Appreciate your attention to these matters. This structure is similar. We have been in contact with the owner of this property. This was another structure that was noticed last year, almost a year to date. Contact was made with the owner. He provided us documentation, provided us a written statement that said that he would begin work on the property in mid-July of last year, and that came in with, we were willing to work with him, and he actually pulled permits, which was one of the conditions in order for us to not proceed with the condemnation process. Those permits have since expired. No work's been completed. We, again, think the notice was again in January, and in February, he came back and said that he was going to go at it again, and we've not heard anything from him as far as work, or, and no work has been completed. So we went ahead and moved forward with the condemnation process and were asking the commission to grant a demolition order on this property due to the fact that it's in a serious state of disrepair. The property has not had water service for nearly two years, and the fact that it's not valued at more than $15,000, you could easily run into that just by putting a roof on it. And it has no plumbing or electrical, and it's side of building, right? So it's, and you easily have more money in this very quickly than the current structure would work to be better off. To start over from the property owner's perspective, from the city's perspective, it's been kind of an eyesore, well, has been an eyesore for the neighborhood for quite some time.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, anybody here to speak about this piece of property? All right, we're going to close this meeting at 6:18, and we'll go on to reports for permission and staff. Vince is still on vacation, so he's staying in town, but I think he's leaving. His kids are leaving today, and Laura's over there. Courtney, you have anything?
Just a reminder, the next meeting is set for June the 10th, and the deadline for agenda items for that meeting is this Friday, the 31st.
Anything else? Anything for the commission? Okay. We don't, Keep Kingsville Beautiful doesn't have anything tonight, but you just, you did?
Item 12.
Okay. I thought maybe you weren't giving an award away to somebody.
No, I'm happy to answer.
Mike Kellum, did I say? It is. I was trying to ignore that.
This dude could change his mind.
Trust me, I've tried it before. Yeah. Mike, you've been here, what, less than two?
Almost two.
Almost two. We ain't at Hawk's Landing. We got all our codes up to date, all our building codes, which it's taken nine years for me to encourage. We get builders from out of town. I hear it all the time from Houston or from San Antonio. They just don't understand why we have a different code book than everybody else in the state of Texas. And it was made very difficult to, to work and made us notorious for that. So I, you know, that alone was bad in Hawk's Landing, but you've compiled a wonderful staff and, and they've been a great, great leader in helping us try to clean up Kingsville, not to mention the work that you did at the university on, on the Newman Center. And Dr. Towne will tell people that if it wasn't for your leadership on that, on that project, it probably wouldn't have happened. The help that you've done at Texas Theater in getting that project off the ground, what you've done to help at the old high school, these are just the things that I can think of off the top of my head. The projects that you've been involved in in less than 24 months, I can't replace you. There's no way. There's just no way, and we'll just have to get somebody that'll, you know, try to do the best they can. But we'll encourage you. And I know whatever you do in life, whatever you go, you're going to be successful. This city owes you a great deal, and I know you're talking about going out maybe on your own and doing some consulting work. I hope someday the city of Kingsville has an opportunity to use you as a consultant on a, on a project down here.
At a reduced price.
Is anybody else on the commission, have anything else going on, Scott?
Yeah, Mayor, he can't take the car.
As far as I'm concerned, he can take the car.
I'd like to say I've only been on this commission for a year, but what a year. I'm, I'm just dumbfounded on how much work you were able to accomplish with your people and your support, and we're a better city and a community for that. For that, thank you.
I didn't even mention Wildwood Trails and all the pain and suffering that was.
Still is.
Still is. I mean, it just made how much, much you've accomplished. Anybody else?
Also the old high school.
Yes. Oh, yeah, he's spearheaded that.
A great, a great responsibility there. And above all, your person, your personality, you know, really, really, I think enlightened your position and made your position more workable. Because in a lot of situations, you, because of your position, you're, you're set in between two issues and you got to work things out, but your personality kept working at it, and that's attributed to you.
Very professional.
Very professional.
If I could, Mayor Commission, just, I was going to do this at the end of the meeting, but it feels more appropriate to do now. You know, I'm probably stepping out of line here, but I do want to thank the commission for all their support and experience in this effort on your part. I couldn't have had an opportunity to do those things without the support of the five individuals sitting at that, at that table. So I, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for the opportunity that you've given me, and my staff has done a wonderful job, and I'm so very proud of them. Proud of the things that we were able to accomplish, and not just my staff, but the other departments that we partnered with. And just, it's been a great experience for me. It's bittersweet to leave. I'm very proud of what we've done here in Kingsville, but I couldn't have done any of it without the decisions that you five have to make, and the previous commission that was here for the first year. And just a true honor to serve Kingsville. I thank you all very much for the kind words tonight, and would love to be able to do anything I can because I'm a huge.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
He's parked the car in my house.
Okay, anything else? Well, I neglected the Academy Girls, Sandy Betrude's Lady Lions are in the state baseball tournament this, starting tomorrow, and we wish them well. That's a, that's a great honor for Kingsville and for our community, and I'm sure that they'll, they'll represent us as well, and hopefully bring home a state championship. That'd be a great thing. I can't think of anything else. Can y'all? Okay, let's go to the public comments on the agenda. Anybody that wants to get up and speak about anything on or off the agenda, all you have to do is come up to the podium and tell us who you are, and you have three minutes to talk about it. Okay, then we'll move on into our consent agenda.
Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Pickles to accept the consent agenda as presented, seconded by Mr. Luber. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fanyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh.
Yes, we're going to our regular agenda. Commissioner Pickles neglected to tell you, I thought I'd give you a little break today, and I'm asking Commissioner Luber to do the.
Unless you pass the one.
No, I'll be more than happy.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
All the calls and all the hate emails.
Yeah, yeah. Good luck.
Okay, we're going to our regular agenda. The first item is consider condemnation of structure located at 603 and a half West Avenue D here in Kingsville. Is there a motion?
Absolutely.
Yep. Got to do a specific question.
Shall I?
Yes, you can do your manner.
Make a motion, finding not able to repair the building or structure is unsafe and present condition is violation of ordinances and cannot be corrected without substantial reconstruction, and then declare the building or structure to be a public nuisance and order its demolition by owner, agent, person in charge within 30 days.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Luber to condemn this property, seconded by Commissioner Fanyer. Commissioner Garcia, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I mean, in particular, special language. Correct. Okay. Well, I'll tell you something. I wish, if you, if you have an opportunity to look at, quite frankly, all these structures, it's a, it's a no-brainer. I mean, they're just completely dilapidated, and quite frankly, when you drive around Kingsville, I recognize almost every one of them, and it's time to gather. So is there any other comments? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fanyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh.
Yes. Next item is consider condemnation of structures located at 2029 General Cabasus Boulevard. Do we need to do this?
Just a point of correction. Yes, sir. Since the owner has already signed the voluntary demolition order, the commission doesn't have to take official action on this item.
Okay, then we'll go to the next item, consider condemnation of structure located at 426 West Weeshedge here in Kingsville, Texas.
Mayor, I make a motion, finding not able to repair the building or structure is unsafe and present condition is violation of ordinances and cannot be corrected without substantial reconstruction, and declare the building or structure to be a public nuisance and order its demolition by owner, agent, person in charge within 30 days.
Second.
Motion to condemn this property made by Commissioner Luber, seconded by Commissioner Beckles. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Fanyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh.
Yes. Next item is consider condemnation of structure located at 822 East Ella here in Kingsville.
Mayor, make a motion, finding not able to repair the building or structure is unsafe and present condition is violation of ordinances and cannot be corrected without substantial reconstruction, declare the building or structure to be a public nuisance and order its demolition by owner, agent, person in charge within 30 days.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Luber to condemn the property, seconded by Commissioner Fanyer. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fanyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh.
Yes, next item is consider condemnation of structure located at, did we do Ella yet?
306 West Weeshedge.
306 West Weeshedge here in Kingsville, Texas. Courtney?
You ready?
Yeah.
Make a motion, not able, finding not able to repair the building or structure is unsafe. The present condition is violation of ordinances and cannot be corrected without substantial reconstruction, and declare the building or structure to be a public nuisance and order its demolition by owner, agent, person in charge within 30 days.
Second.
Motion made to condemn this property made by Commissioner Luber, seconded by Commissioner Beckles. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fanyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh.
Yes, next item is consider condemnation of structure located at 609 East Mesquite here in Kingsville.
Mayor, make a motion, finding not able to repair the building or structure is unsafe. The present condition is violation of ordinances and cannot be corrected without substantial reconstruction, declare the building or structure to be a public nuisance and order its demolition by owner, agent, person in charge within 30 days.
I second the motion.
Motion to condemn the property made by Commissioner Luber, seconded by Commissioner Beckles. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Fanyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh.
Yes, next item is consider condemnation of structure located at 1229 East Avenue B here in Kingsville.
I make a motion finding not able to repair the building or structure is unsafe and present condition is a violation of ordinances, cannot be corrected without substantial reconstruction, declare the building or structure to be a public nuisance and order its demolition by owner agent person in charge within 30 days.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Luber to condemn this property, seconded by Commissioner Fanyan. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Fanyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh.
Yes, next item is consider accepting donations for the Keep Kingsville Beautiful program from various individuals and organizations from KKB Luncheon and for T-shirt sales. Okay, turn to the plane we developed.
I'm on here just by default. I'll ask Alice to come on up and put you on the events that they had and the wonderful donations that they were able to receive and that we're here before you.
This again was taken place quite some time ago, but we raised about, what was it, Jennifer? Opening amount was seven?
Nine hundred and seventy-one.
Nine seventy-one, okay. And that was including some of the T-shirt sales, too. And we would like to put this in the budget for this year.
Okay. You mean you didn't bring us a big check or something?
We didn't have a big check.
Okay, well, that's a, it was a, it was a great luncheon. Yeah, we had the new head football coach.
He was about this high off the ground and just got everybody charged up.
Yeah, I mean, really, it gets like a locker room, locker room.
It was.
Speech, it was, we got everybody fired up, so it was a good time. Okay.
I suppose they would accept the donation.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Luber to accept this donation, seconded by Commissioner Pickles. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fanyan?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh.
Yes. Next is consider introduction of an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Kingsville, Texas, admitting the fiscal year 2012, 2013 general fund budget for the city of Kingsville to accept donations made for the Keep Kingsville Beautiful program in conjunction with the community appearance project.
Mayor Commissioners, this is the introduction of the budget corresponding to the agenda item that was presented just a few minutes ago. The luncheon netted $729.50 and the T-shirts was $242 for a sum total of $971.50. What are your consideration?
That's an introduction item, so it's pretty self-explanatory, but does anybody else have any questions in that case? Okay, if not, we'll run the next item, consider accepting new COPC sync equipment for four vehicles from Claybrook County District Attorney for the Kingsville Specialized Crime and Narcotics Task Force. Willie, it's good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. The district attorney has been very fortunate from his share from our seizures. And of course, we were extremely lucky because of the agents that we have in our Kingsville task force. In the last six months, I am happy to report that just in three seizures, money seizures alone, we have netted 1.3 million. So 20% of that goes to Mr. Huber. He in turn turns around and sometimes gets requests from several law enforcement agencies in the area, but he was able to grant this one for us. What we're gonna do is replace the four existing systems and four units. And then if you see in the rest of the agenda, the next two items, as well as number 14, turn around and loan that equipment to the four constables. So they'll be able to have that same equipment in their units, laptops, printers, cameras, and be able to have full-time sharing of intel, just like our agents for the police department and the task force.
How's that working out, the project that's in the constable's office?
It's gonna work, Mr. Mayor. As a matter of fact, this is the first step of it. We will, Mr. Huber is gonna pay for our four precinct three because of the shares of monies that we've given him in the last year since, well, since the inception of the working agreement back in April of 2011 through this court. He will then pay for the four constables, the installation and the revised equipment as well. So it's a combined project between the constables, the VA and ourselves. It's something that will be beneficial to all of us. And in turn, I will advise this court that COPC now has a program called COPC 911. The school districts in Ricardo Rivera will have that system implemented into their school. All that teacher or that principal has to do is hit a button on her computer and the five closest officers that have that system, the COPC system, will be alerted, there's a problem, a situation, an active shooter situation at that school, and we'll be able to respond right then and there. And it's not gonna be no cost to either school district.
Okay, what are we doing in Kingsville?
Some of the school districts right now, Mr. Mayor, are still contemplating that. We brought Ricardo Rivera into the picture at no cost. COPC is now asking for a $1,200 yearly maintenance fee of some sort. We're hoping to change their mind in that and also be able to give the same opportunity to KISD.
Any questions?
What's the value?
The exact amount, Commissioner, for the equipment that Mr. Huber is gonna be purchasing is $36,165.60. And the four constables is a little under $3,000 each. And that'll be between $9,000 and $12,000 depending if precinct four wants the equipment or not. We've heard that Constable Vidal does not want a computer in his vehicle, so we will see. But it's airborne.
So that's a, I mean, if all four are on board, you're talking about $12,000 maybe?
Yes, sir.
The county saving.
Yes, sir. Of course, we had this proposal a couple of years ago, well, initially, the first year I was here with COPC and the initial agreement, service agreement that we had, told $21,000. So the equipment that they're getting is still viable equipment, still has two years warranty remaining. So again, with a no-fault exchange, if something should happen with anything, it's fixed without any excuse.
Great example of partnerships.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes. What value is placed on the use of a system that is gonna be placed in the constables' vehicles?
The value itself, sir?
Yeah. What are we exchanging? You know, what are we giving away as part of value? I just wanna bring it out.
Each.
Or sharing, and let me just say sharing.
Sharing, yes, sir. Of course, they're paying for about $3,000 per unit. In addition, if you would take all the equipment from scratch, including the training, and of course, one of our agents is very well versed in this, Richard Patrick is gonna supply the training and save him $1,200, you're looking at about $8,000 per unit.
Yeah? Yes. There's a lot of comments going on here. What is keeping KISD from not having this system?
Right now, I can't answer that, sir. We'll have to ask that to the COPC representative who has been conversing with those administrators.
I'd like to see him get it.
Yes, sir.
Say it to him. Let me know.
It'd be beneficial.
Yeah.
Again, you have members of KPD that have that system. You'll have the constables, you'll have the task force, and hopefully other entities. Around this DPS is right now considering that, so you'll have troopers in Kingsville that have that system. And if an incident should occur in our schools, we will have the opportunity to respond instead of being dispatched, because we will be alerted right then and there, right?
You know, you were at our workshop and one of the things that we talked about was helping our school district as much as we can.
Yes, sir.
This could be a good example of that.
And hopefully the introduction to the other, too, sir, and the benefit that hopefully it'll show our school district here, hopefully that will entice them to jump one more.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, do you have an idea what it's costing the districts to coordinate that program?
It'll be $1,200 a year.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Doesn't matter how big the district is?
As far as I've been told, no, sir. Again, it may be per, per.
Per school?
Per school.
That's still not that much for cash, dude.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Willie.
Good project. All right, this is an action item.
So.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Garcia to accept this equipment, seconded by Commissioner Luber, right? Okay. Well, I was trying to, it's a photo finish and I was trying to be.
And come in first by a nose.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fanyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh.
Yes. Next item is consider resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a COPC service agreement for the Kingsville Specialized Crime and Narcotics Task Force. Certainly, yes.
Yes, sir, since we're utilizing their system, again, it's their software hardware that we're utilizing in this program. And there is a yearly license fee that we have to pay along with that. Of course, Mr. Huber will pay for our first year. We've already paid this current year with our budget, so we have this year and next year already paid for that service agreement. Of course, it requires Mr. Papel to sign off on.
Okay. Any other questions about this? It's an action item. So, motion made by Commissioner Pickles to approve this resolution. Thank you, seconded by Commissioner Garcia. Any other discussion? Willie, this is cash neutral to the city, isn't it? This is something that the task force?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Willie.
Yes, sir.
In the school, I guess, in his constable's office, I guess, right?
Yes, sir. At this point, it's, of course, through our funds, the constable is using his share to pay all the four constables and Mr. Huber is paying for ours.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fanyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh.
Yes, next item is consider lending over COPC equipment from task force to four constable, Claybrook County Constables for use in their vehicles. It's kind of an interesting description, over equipment, I mean, I kind of have such.
Well, it's two years old, Mr. Mayor. Of course, like I said, it has a four-year warranty on it, so they still have two years warranty remaining on the systems. It is used equipment, but there's nothing that is not working currently in our vehicles, sir, and all it's gonna do is be transferred from our unit to their units.
Okay, any discussion on this?
Yes, will the commissioners' court have to accept?
Yes, sir, we were in their court this morning, sir. Mr. Huber was there, of course, advising the court of his expenditure and the agreement that his office, the constables and ourselves have come upon, and they also voted 5-0, sir, in favor of the other project.
I think Commissioner Fanyan made a really good point. I mean, this really benefits the county. It's equipment to.
Yes, sir.
To their people, to help them to respond in good fashion, so I think it's another example of the city helping the county.
Yes, sir. Not only monetarily, but also in utilizing the system and being able, hopefully, to train them to be able to.
And really, truly, for the city of Kingsville, help the Claybrook County, the citizens of Claybrook County outside of the city.
Yes, sir.
By providing safer schools for their children and their brother.
Yes, sir, since our agents are going up and down that highway because of the working agreements that we have in existence, it's a win-win.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, I don't think we, did we get a motion on this?
No.
Okay. Second. A motion made by Commissioner Fanyan to loan this equipment to the constable's office, the four constable's office, seconded by Commissioner Pickles. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Fanyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh.
Yes, next item is consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the commission agreement for the Kingsville Historical Mural.
I'll speak to that, I guess. We're a team. Okay, all we're asking is just to consider the resolution, as we say, for the city manager to really extend the, make an amendment to the commission agreement that's already been signed.
Why is this taken so far?
Because.
Is it a deal with artists or?
Yes, a lot of it is a deal with artists. We brought in Jesus de la Rosa, who's a professor of art, social professor of art at the university, to kind of work between the two. This is our first mural and it's a good learning experience because they.
Where are we all from?
Well, we have a committee and we have a whole list of places for it. I know, the city manager likes. We have a committee, we have a committee on the technical content and a committee on the historical content and all of that. But basically, the good news is the date of delivery is August 31st, 2013, so.
The date of delivery, what's that, do you deliver a mural?
Yes.
Or you paint it on the side of a wall?
No, you paint it on panels and then it's delivered, so they can move it about, yes. So the date of delivery of the panels to the city is set for August 31st, so it's not a long extension.
Great.
Just about there.
Good deal. Mayor?
Yes.
What's the dimensions of that mural?
Twelve by 32.
Twelve feet by 32 feet.
Twelve feet high, 32 foot wide. And it'll be painted in panels.
Okay.
Bye, ma'am, Mayor.
Sure.
I was on the committee of the location, we came up with about three locations downtown, presented those, ranked it. I also was able to meet the artist and see the work in Corpus Christi. And the work that I saw at the time was pretty, I mean, he had done a substantial amount of work on it already. And it was, it's, it's pretty nice looking. I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna be nice, it's on panels, it's gonna be easily mounted, so it's going to be, he's a good artist, he's a good, a nice young man, I have to say.
Good deal.
And again, Jesus de la Rosa looked at it, too, the person he saw it, also thought that we would be well pleased.
Okay.
Yes. You mentioned relocating.
Relocating.
The mural of the different locations in town.
No, no.
At different times? No?
Oh, no, I don't think we.
Did I hear that?
Talked about that, no. It just says it could be, we, Commissioner Luber was talking about places, we identified several different places.
Okay, so once you, once you decide on the location, it could remain there?
Yes, yes, but there's always the possibility that you can, especially if it's getting stagnant.
It won't be static, it could be moved.
Exactly, you have that option, yes. You have that option.
Wanted to inquire, see if you could?
I think that there was a lot of that before, though, is if other locations perform one muriation at some point.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? If this is an action item, so moved. Second. Motion made by Commissioner Pickles to authorize this, the city manager to enter into this contract, seconded by Commissioner Garcia. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Commissioner Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Fugue?
Yes. Next item is Consider an introduction of an ordinance amendment fiscal year 2012, 2013 budget for the general fund, capital project fund for upfront infrastructure costs as per the economic development agreement with Zarsky Development Company LLC for the W., subdivision.
Mayor Commissioners, this is the introduction for budget amendment for upfront, the city's portion of the three hundred thousand for the agreement, and it's been discussed in great detail. This money would be coming from the unassigned or unreserved fund balance and the city manager's provided for the calculation. We currently have in our general fund, unreserved fund balance, about four point one six months operating. Our target is three months operating and we run about one point three million per month in operating expenses. We do the calculations annually to make sure that we're within that, but we have in excess of the three-month operating, about one point five million, so we're setting in good shape. The benchmark that we were pulling down to previously was the unassigned fund balance at fiscal year ten, but when you look at the three-month operating on a standard operating year, you have a little more cushion, a little more rim to work with.
Well, for the last couple of years, we've, we've run with some pretty significant surpluses out of our budget, so even though we, another year in your staff and the city staff in its entirety has worked really hard to predict, it's, it's a good, it's hard, yeah, it is particular city government because there's so many variables, but y'all done a great job, but it's a good problem to have.
Yes, sir.
So we have six hundred thousand dollars over and drop what we projected.
Yes, sir.
Our fund balance are more than healthy. This is an opportunity for us to do some economic development that we might not be able to do otherwise. I want to congratulate the county. They passed their economic incentive agreements to the...
Guide lines?
Guide lines. Yeah, thank you, Luber. And their application to apply for those, those monies, and it looks like that this project is going to come to fruition and I think it's going to really help us significantly here in Kingsville. And I want to make sure that they get credit also for being a partner in this project and it's a good thing. Anybody have any question? This is an introduction item. Okay, well, it's not a record, but it's not bad. It's, this is all this we have at the city tonight.